I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on April 23rd. With April 23rd, 2020 with remote attendance. Hopefully, the council can hear me. And first up on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. And we do have an agenda and consent agenda items. Are there any additions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda. This is Lenny.
Second, Michael Stedman.
It's been moved by Councilmember Greenstein and second by Councilmember Stedman to approve today's agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries. Under our new guidelines from the Governor Inslee's proclamation to stay home and stay safe, we are not taking public comment live, but they have allowed public comment to be submitted to the city under the email publiccomment@ci.lacy.wa.us. We did receive one public comment about that, and it will be in the record. Next up on our agenda is public hearings, and I'm going to turn this over to Steve or Scott.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Steve Kirkman, our Public Affairs Manager, will provide the background and presentation for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to do a check here, Scott, am I showing on the screen? No, so we're going to wait just a moment for our technical switching. Scott, give me a... Okay, here we go.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you. So, welcome to the city's first-ever hearing on Zoom. So, as you just saw, it's not going to be perfect, but it's going to meet our objectives, and so we hope you'll indulge us as we work through this. So, tonight's hearing is for our Community Development Block Grant process. What we're going to do this evening is consider proposals that have been provided to the city through our recent RFP process. For folks that may... There's a few councilmembers. This is likely your first CDBG process, so I'm just going to briefly run through some of the basics. CDBG is a federal program, and it's basically designed to benefit low- and moderate-income residents. And low- and moderate-income residents are folks that have incomes of $46,900 for a one-person household to $88,800 for an eight-person household. And eligible projects include affordable housing, capital improvements, community facilities, and publicly benefit those LMI households. As I mentioned, it is a HUD program, and it's administered locally by the Washington State Department of Commerce. And then at this county level, it's actually managed by Thurston County. And we have some county reps in the wings, and we will be bringing them forward later in the process to respond to any technical CDBG questions that council might have that are beyond the scope of the city staff responding to. We, several years ago, entered into a partnership with Thurston County and our Tumwater and the South County cities to create an urban county partnership, which basically makes us an entitlement county, which means the money comes automatically every year rather than us having to go out and compete statewide. So, a good thing. And Olympia is its own entitlement community, so they aren't part of the process. That's because they're a capital city. And we actually put that partnership together in 2012. This is Lacey's third round through the partnership process, and we have approximately $1.1 million available for granting. We put a request for project proposals in the website and on different publications on the 21st of February, and we also worked with the county to notify approximately 60 local community development and social service nonprofits and some public agencies about the RFP. And the RFP was, I don't know, probably 40 or 50 pages, so quite detailed on what was eligible, what wasn't, timelines and that type of thing. The deadline was the 3rd of April, and we received seven proposals, and that totaled about $1.3 million. So, a bit about today's process. Momentarily, we'll be having brief presentations on the proposals. So, council can, if they wish, select a proposal today or proposals. We have enough available funds to do more than one project. Or they can refer that to the 14th of May, and we, as the council, you can just continue to discuss and deliberate. We need to have our projects to the county so they can get into HUD by mid-July, so you know, sometime by mid-April. I mean, late May, sorry about that. We'll want to have that list forwarded to the county folks so they can get all their lists together. We expect that HUD will be making approval sometime in early September. That, especially these days with everything going on, that's... We may adjust a bit, but that's sort of the tentative schedule. And that projects in general must be completed by the 31st of December. So, that would be projects that we argue would award as part of this. So, the order of presentations today are the Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County, the Childcare Action Council of Thurston County, the Lacey Veteran Services Hub, Garden Raised Bounty, Homes First, South Pigeon Sound Habitat for Humanity, and the Thurston County Food Bank. We sensed this is a little different animal from a normal hearing. We did a lot of thinking and a lot of work to make sure we could meet public involvement requirements and get as close to normal as we could. And so, we did publish instructions on our website and on the agenda, this agenda that you have in front of you that went out in various places, on how to provide testimony during the hearing. No members of the public elected to provide testimony under that scenario, so we have no public testimony. However, we are still, and this again was published in all those various places, we will be taking written testimony from persons wishing to testify on any of the proposals by noon on April 27th, and they can do that by sending the comment to the city clerk's email, which you can see on your screen, or obviously, we'll take that by mail, or if they want to come drop it by City Hall some way, we're happy to take it. And as our practice, any written testimony received will be made part of the public record. And that is all I have on this part of the testimony. Actually, I just want to mention that we, like I said, we have county staff available, so if there are technical questions, we will just kind of defer to them on those answers. And we've asked the presenters to limit their presentations to about five minutes, and then council can ask questions for five or 10 minutes after each presentation, and then I close the hearing.
So, before we... Yeah, before we get started here, I know we have a couple of questions from our councilmembers, Councilmember Greenstein and then Councilmember Cox. Go ahead, Councilmember Greenstein.
Yeah, so Steve, just for clarity, I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure everyone does.
Sure.
In our decision-making on this, we not only can pick which applications we fund, but we can also fund them at different amounts than were asked for.
Absolutely.
In other words, for instance, we have $1.1 million, and there's $1.3 in requests. We're off by about, I think my math is about 18%. We could fund them all and do it, you know, minus 18% on all of them and fund them all if we wanted to, correct?
Absolutely. In fact, it's very common for council to do exactly that. It might not be exactly 18%, but we...
No, that was just... That was my math. It was close, but not exactly.
We frequently sort of adjust the budgets as far as we can to fund as many projects as possible. That's the typical approach.
Thanks, Councilmember Greenstein. Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. As the organizations are giving their presentations, I would love to hear them comment on this question. If you had to fill out, you know, the same opportunity today to fill out the application, would it look a lot different than what you submitted, given what we're experiencing with COVID-18? I just would like to get a sense from all of you whether, you know, you would like your application to stand as it is, or if you feel like, wow, this really isn't going to be what I need.
So, that's a...
I'm not saying we can change...
It's a...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure that we could change, you know, we can't change your application, but I think that input is going to be important to council. Thank you.
I agree. Could you give us a sort of an idea of when the applications came in? Because you said it was April 2nd is when it closed?
The 3rd was when they were due, right.
The 3rd is when they were due, and so, you know, by then, we had already been experiencing COVID-19 and some of its impacts, maybe not to the full degree, but I'm just sort of curious how much of an impact that has had on their applications as well. So, Steve, do you want to ask that question at the beginning? Would you like me to ask that question, or Councilmember Cox would like to?
So, yeah, we can... Mayor, if you don't... Or there will be a Q and A after each presentation, which is about five minutes. We give them a little bit of grace, but that's the target. So, then council will have, you know, five minutes to do follow-up questions. So, that actually would be an appropriate first question to each presenter, and you'll be asking after each presentation.
Okay.
So, it'll be right on the heels of what they've just done. So, that might be a good approach.
Great. So, Councilmember Cox, when the five minutes is over, I will go to you first, and you can ask that question, and then we'll go from there with the questions. Sound like a plan? Great. Then, Steve, let's start with the first presentation, and that's from the Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County. Chris Woods.
And Mayor, it may take just a moment to get that up.
It's understandable.
Hi, can you guys hear me? This is Chelica Trevino, Director of Operations.
We can hear you.
At Boys and Girls Clubs. Okay, can you see me?
Not yet.
Okay, here we go. There we are.
There we are.
So, I'm going to start out for us, and then Chris Woods will join after I'm done. I'm the Director of Operations. Like I said, I've worked for Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County now for nearly 15 years. I spent nine years at the Lacey branch as the branch director there. And over the course of the last decade, we've seen quite a bit of changes in Lacey, specifically our demographic that we serve at the Lacey Club. Back in 2016, '17 school year, North Thurston Public Schools approached us and asked whether or not we would be willing to serve the homeless population considered the McKenney-Vento group in the afternoon hours so that they didn't have to ride the bus after school for upwards of two to three hours until they were taken to their temporary place of residence. Our mission is to serve the kids that need us most, whether that be after school or in the summer months. And so, of course, our answer to the question was yes. We started a program that year, served nearly 45 kids in that program. And then the next year, we applied for CDBG funding from you guys. And as Lacey always does, you all stepped up and funded us at the $30,000 level. That gave us an opportunity to devote a staff member as a McKenney-Vento coordinator, who worked tremendously hard to connect families to resources. Kids were able to come to the Boys and Girls Club for a couple hours every afternoon. To the outsider, it looked as if they were participating, just like regular Boys and Girls Club members, participating in social recreation activities, joining our art programs, our technology programs. What wasn't obvious from the outside was that these kids were also receiving wraparound services. And so, the McKenney-Vento coordinator would spend time daily checking in with every one of those children, as well as with their parents on a weekly basis, to make sure that they were equipped with the things that they needed to be successful. So, whether that was a new backpack, a coat, maybe they needed some help with motel money for that particular week, that person spent time working on that. We had a successful year. We served over 70 kids that year with the McKenney-Vento program in partnership with North Thurston Public Schools. And so, the program started to grow from there. That year, that foundational year, as I consider it, where you all stepped up for support, really gave us the opportunity to go to other funders and explain to them the huge need that exists in the city of Lacey with the homeless students that we serve. We've been able to secure funding since then. At this point, 50% of the kids that attend the Boys and Girls Club in Lacey are considered homeless. They are part of the McKenney-Vento Act and the McKenney-Vento program with North Thurston Public Schools. This next school year, we anticipate seeing roughly 80 kids a day. I will speak to the question that was posed. I anticipate that number will grow because of COVID-19. I expect that there will be more homeless families in Lacey and across Thurston County. So, if given the opportunity to change the application, maybe we would have asked for more so that we can fill the need that will exist come this fall. Our club capacity, due to this McKenney-Vento program, definitely happened the year before last, and we did have to cap attendance. In response to that, we did work with the North Thurston Public School District to come up with a plan for serving kids out of the Lacey Elementary location. And so, last year, we were able to increase the McKenney-Vento number to 126 kids total that were served because of the after-school program, which was a huge leap from the year before. We want to do that again this year, and I'll let Chris speak to that. We do still employ a McKenney-Vento program coordinator. We have since the implementation of the full program back in the '17, '18 school year. This proposal asks for that position to continue. We're asking you all to be a partner. We have solidified other funding partners, Miss Wally Indian Tribe, Dawkins Charitable Trust, and a number of others who realize that this truly is a need and that kids, they need this wraparound support, and they need to not be on a bus all afternoon on their way to what is a very dire circumstance. Some of these kids are going to a car, others are going to grandma or grandpa's temporarily, some are living out of hotels. For the couple hours that they spend at Boys and Girls Club, and I said this a few years ago, and I truly believe it even more as I stand before you tonight, those kids get to be kids, and they deserve that so very much. They deserve to take a break from what are really adult issues. There are a number of reasons that families find themselves homeless, none of which is the responsibility or burden that a child should carry. So, while they're at the club, they get to check out of that scenario and really check into being a kid and have fun. And at the bare minimum, that's what they're receiving at Boys and Girls Club. At this point, I'll introduce you to Chris Woods. He's our CEO.
So, Chelica, as we get started here, we're getting pretty close on your five minutes, but as we're all new to this, I need to officially open the public hearing for today's CDBG testimony, and I'm going to do that now.
Okay.
Thank you, and on to Chris. You have just a short time.
Yep. As Chelica said, my name is Chris Woods. I'm CEO of Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County. Before I came to Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County, I was the Assistant Superintendent in the Tumwater School District, before that, a high school principal, elementary principal, and teacher, all for the past 22 years. When I came to the Boys and Girls Club, one of the first things that I was impressed with was this program. As a former school district administrator, one of the challenges we had often was supporting our students who were experiencing homelessness at the end of the school day, rather than putting them on a bus for a couple hours, having to run the normal route, and then at the end of the route, those children were delivered to wherever home was that evening. This program really, really has been a pioneer in Thurston County. Just a couple statistics that we've seen. We're at about 50% of our members at the Lacey Club that experience homelessness, and this is certainly an increase over the years, and we believe, much like Chelica said, that this number is going to grow, partly because of our partnership with the North Thurston Public Schools. More of those children are able to come to our clubs. That's one of the increases, but also just because of natural circumstances in our community, and one of which is what we're experiencing now, and we believe that number is going to grow. And also, we're up to about 62% of our children are qualifying for reduced meals, and that's up 20% in the last four years. The big bulk of what we're asking for really is personnel costs. For us to accommodate these children, it simply requires more staffing, and that's the bulk of our request today. And then a small amount for indirect costs, which really is Chelica and David, who are doing the behind-the-scenes administrative work. But the last thing I want to say is our partnership with the North Thurston Public Schools has been outstanding in this respect, in their communication and flexibility with us in making this program work. One of the things that we are looking ahead to is putting a club at the Raj Monhas Activity Center. The school district has already given us the go-ahead. Our plans are changing a little, given our current situation. We were planning on opening this summer with a summer camp there and then leading into school programming in September. The plan remains the same. Nice thing about the Raj Monhas Activity Center is there are a number of resources there already that would allow us to partner with them. I won't go into great detail because of time. Then the last part is I just want to say thank you to all of you for considering our application and for the partnership we have had for the last several years. You've made it possible for us to serve the kids who need us most.
Thank you. Let's go into some question-and answering portion, and I'll start off with Councilmember Cox.
Thank you. I think the question that I have has partially been answered. It sounds like, you know, everybody could use more money. But the question is, if you had your application to do over now, knowing what you know about how COVID is affecting us, would, aside from the amount that you're asking, would you want that money for other purposes, or does it still address your primary need?
I think it still addresses our primary need because these dollars would be used to support staff so that we can in turn support these children. And so, the need still exists. I think the need is just going to be greater as we come out of this pandemic that we're in. So, I don't think it changes our course of action.
Thank you.
Does any other councilmembers have any questions for Chris or the Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County? Seeing none? Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Quick question. So, when you talk about it shifting to the Raj Monhas Center, is that where the whole shifting of activities are going to be for this, what the funds are going to be used for, or will it be divided up between the club that is off of Carpenter and then Slater Kenny?
Chelica's going to speak to that a little bit.
Hi, I'm back. Okay, so Cynthia, our councilmember, what it gives us the opportunity to do is expand services at Raj Monhas. And so, the funding that we're requesting will be at Lacey branch, the main branch we currently operate. But then, in addition to that, with other resources, we will be able to extend services to Raj Monhas. The piece with McKenney-Vento kiddos is that we need to put them at the site that is most appropriate for transportation and their family situation. And so, I anticipate serving at least 80 kids out of the main branch and then potentially 20 to 30 kids out of the Raj Monhas, above and beyond the grant application we've submitted.
Oh, great. Is there any other questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much, and...
Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks for all the great work you do. Next up, under our public hearing, is the Childcare Action Council of Thurston County. See if we can get their presentation started.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Gary Burris. I am going to... I guess I have to start my video here, it looks like. There we go. Now you can see me tip.
You have about five minutes. Just letting you know, you have about five minutes, so I just want to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Gary Burris. I'm the Executive Director of the Childcare Action Council, and we're really excited to share with you some of what we're currently doing and what we're proposing to do. So, I am going to share a PowerPoint presentation here, and if someone would let me know, is that on your screens now?
It is.
Perfect. Okay. So, I'm going to start by telling you a little bit about who we are and where we came from, and then go into what we're proposing to do with some of the funding that we're requesting. So, the Childcare Action Council was formed in 1987, and it was formed by a number of folks in the community representing different sectors. And what they were really looking at doing was to support parents in accessing childcare. They were interested in supporting the childcare workforce, becoming more professionalized and the best childcare providers they could be, and they were also interested in advocacy at the state level, community level, and even at the federal level. As you can see from the slide, our mission is to promote and nurture early learning communities where families and children thrive. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about some of why we're doing what we do. So, I'm sure you've heard that early learning experiences are critical to the developing a solid foundation on which all later learning behavior and health depend. I'm going to show you just a little bit of research. So, 90% of brain development happens in the first five years. Turning through play is essential to this development. The number of neural pathways in the brain that are created is key, and the environment that children are in is what creates those neural pathways and those connections. And then, research shows that as a whole, children from lower-income families have less experiences in what you would call stimulating settings than periods in more affluent settings. And this is key because that is part of why sometimes the neural pathways aren't as strong. So, we focus at Childcare Action Council on families most in need of support. Sorry, I'm trying to read this off of my phone while my PowerPoint goes, so give me one second. I just lost my spot. And we are looking at both play-based programs and getting at locations where children and their families can easily access or where they already are. And we know from the research that children from lower-income families are often not as well-prepared for kindergarten and academic success, and helping children get more prepared will help them. It's really hard to catch up when they enter school behind. So, I want to share with you two programs that we're involved with and that we're looking to expand. So, we're looking to do a new Callioscope Play and Learn Group. We have programs right now at St. Peter Hospital, as well as at the Family Support Center in Olympia. We'd like to add one, and our interest is doing it at Timberland Library, but as you all know, the library is closed right now, so I'll address the council's questions about adjusting our proposal at the end. But our initial proposal was to do this at the library. The library has really strong connections to the homeless community and services for homeless families, and that would be one of our target populations at the library. What we would be doing is a playgroup. So, what a playgroup is, it improves the folks who are at home with their children. They come to a playgroup, and the playgroup... And the play group focuses on supporting children's development through play and helps to educate the caregiver to help them understand the importance of play and how different parts of development are improved through children's play. Play really is children's work and how they learn. Parents also get a chance to connect with other families. And children learn the social skills that are so important in entering kindergarten. Children who are in childcare or in other early learning settings start to develop the social skills. Children who have less play experiences with other children don't have those skills. Those are really important. It's one of the most important things kindergarten teachers talk about. This play group is based on widely recognized theories and best practices. And it was designated as a promising practice by the University of Washington's Evidence-Based Practice Institute in 2013. Let me move on. A little bit about it. It would be bilingual, be offered for an hour and a half a week. And again, as I mentioned, some of the bullets there are the points around the program in terms of how it works. Second program we wanted to share with you is the Raising a Reader Program. So the links between early literacy and school readiness are undeniable. Children from low income families, research tells us that they hear 30 million fewer words by the age of five. And so they start their school careers behind their less economically advantaged peers. And typically, they'll stay behind without supports with programs, reading programs. So we're really working hard to support children to be entering kindergarten with those literacy skills. The way it works is that we engage the caregivers in a routine of book sharing. So folks at the childcare centers, at the childcare homes, at the Head Start programs, at state preschool programs will share books every week. And the idea is to foster a strong brain development, healthy relationships, and a love of reading. And then there's a family engagement piece to it as well. So the books go home every week, different books go home every week. And there's training for the families. And we work on increasing literacy and academic outcomes. And then we do questionnaires with the families to find out how much they're engaging with the program and give them some tips for how to support their kids at home. So each week, red book bags go home to the children's home. The children are exposed to an average of about 100 books each year. And then the goal, of course, is then to develop a love of reading and a love of learning. Raising a Reader is also evidence-based, and it's a pretty affordable model. We're very happy that we've been offering it in Thurston County for over 16 years. And we partner, as I mentioned, with Head Start, with the E-CAP, the state preschool program, as well as childcare centers. And we focus on identifying those childcare centers that serve a lot of low income children, as well as, of course, Head Start and E-CAP for income families. And in Lacy, this last year, we served 229 children at nine different sites. And again, the point being that we want kids to enter kindergarten with those key literacy skills, print awareness, reading motivation, letter knowledge, age-appropriate vocabulary, phonological awareness. And the goal again is to support kids on being prepared for school as they leave their early learning settings. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions that you might have. Let me stop sharing my screen here.
Thank you. So Councilmember Cox, I think he tried to address this, but you can ask her a question again.
All righty. Well, I think you probably got the gist of the question. And my reason for asking it is so that we do make the best use of this money in light of what's come down the pike here. So do you have anything you want to add about?
Yeah. Yeah, I really appreciate. Yeah, I really appreciate that question. One of the things that we've had to do is be nimble and adjust, as I'm sure a lot of organizations are having to do right now. So our play groups are a great example of how we've adjusted what we're doing. So I have some information here about what we've done to change our service model. So what I guess I'm getting at here with this answer is we probably wouldn't request different funding for anything different, but we're delivering our services a little bit differently. So what we're doing is our play group facilitator has been connecting with families by email, text, and phone. We've been using the US Postal Service to mail materials to families. They aren't able to come to play groups right now. And we're doing virtual activities through Zoom and other means. So and then we have a virtual Callioscope Plan and Learn Group. Our first one is designed for May 1st. So just like the council with your inaugural virtual meeting, we're going to be doing the same thing, the virtual play group. I'm not sure how that's going to work for kids. We will see. But our hope is to adjust, right? We have to adjust our services. We're having to adjust our services to support the childcare providers with virtual training. We're having to adjust services for families. And I think as things shift, right? Every day, every week, things are going to be adjusting and adjusting. And so we're going to adjust our service delivery model to meet up with that. With our Raising a Reader Program, we did end up ending that program early this year. So rather than running it through right about this time of year, through the middle of April, middle of May, we ended it three or four weeks ago. But we're looking at how could we do that in a way that would be safe, right? If kids are back in childcare, whether it's in September, October, November, whenever they do come back to childcare settings, we want to try to figure out a way to make sure that the book sharing can still happen. But maybe the rotations, we have to maybe take the books out of rotation for a month to make sure any virus that might be on those books is dead before that book bag is put out again. So we're thinking about what kind of protocols might be put in place to allow book sharing. I don't know. I mean, childcare, childcare is considered a central service. The childcare is still operating right now. The numbers in those facilities are very small compared to what they usually are. But the importance of reading is still there. And we still want to encourage reading for kids who are going to childcare settings. And of course, as I mentioned, I think more and more, as more and more businesses start to open up again, more and more kids will start to come to childcare again. And we want to just be able to either adjust services as needed or implement as we had previously planned.
Great, Gary. Does any, yeah. Does any other council member, Deputy Mayor Pratt?
Gary, so at least part of your program sounds similar to other programs that other organizations are doing. I'm thinking of the South Sound Reading Foundation. How do you see what you're doing is different than, for instance, South Sound Reading Foundation that promotes reading with parents and giving out books and sharing that kind of thing?
Yeah, it's a little more, it's more formal and targeted. And I think it's a nice pairing, right? I think that South Sound Reading Foundation does wonderful work and gets a lot of books out to the community. There's a lot of good parent education, a lot of good literacy education. We're targeting lower income families. So we have a very targeted group. We're targeting, like I mentioned, nine sites that have Head Start and E-CAP. So 200 some children that we think are the most vulnerable in terms of their being ready for school around literacy and language development. So it's really targeted. And then it's not just maybe giving them three or four or five books. It's giving them different books every week, award-winning books every week. So they'll get exposed to 100 different books over the course of the year. And we recognize that a lot of lower income families aren't going to have a lot of books in their home, perhaps, because of the cost. So this gives a chance for those books to circulate in lower income families and for kids to be exposed to a lot of different types of books. And they're all age-appropriate. So if you're a two-year-old or a three-year-old or a four-year-old, you're getting the books that are appropriate for your age.
Is there any other questions? I just have a quick question. Do you, Gary, you guys, do you use eBooks at all? Is that, and what other, you know, possible ways are you going to have to adjust your services that you provide? I mean, this is really, what you're doing is a lot of hands-on, you know, work with these kids, which is very necessary. But obviously, we're in a completely different time right now. And so do you think, you know, where will your numbers be compared to what they have historically been?
Yeah. So as I mentioned, with the Callioscope Group, we've just continued to operate with a modified delivery plan. We haven't developed a modified delivery plan for Raising a Reader at this point. But I know somewhat what the school district are doing with getting Chromebooks in the students' hands and other things. There might be some ways to support kids. I don't know. I think it's going to be difficult because the investment in some of the technology for the families would be huge. And, but I appreciate the need to figure out a way to get a modified program in place, should this last nine months or 12 months, and not have, you know, kids back in childcare for a longer period. But we haven't figured, to be quite frank, we haven't figured that out yet. But we would be looking at ways to do that. And I know, I can give you an example of what we're doing with our E-CAP programs. We have the state pre-K program in both Shelton and we partner with Thurston for the state pre-K program. One of the things we're doing is we're using our regular bus route. And we're distributing both food and educational materials to people every week. So there are ways to, even though it's still hands-on, there are ways to modify the program, still get out to kids, to get out to families and get materials to them. It would be harder to do that with this program, but I could see us doing that, at least with the E-CAP and Head Start sites that are connected to bus routes and families in that sort of way.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Hey, Perry. Neither.
I'm seeing none. We will go on to our, thank you very much, Gary.
Yes, thank you all very much, too. I really appreciate the chance to have you all.
Great. We'll go on to our next presentation, which is the Lacy Veterans Services Hub. And that's to you, Steve.
Sorry, it would help if I unmuted. So thank you. It's a great honor to present this proposal to council. We have done similar proposals in the past, but it's been a while. We did the Lacy Family Services and Childcare Center way back in 1999 or 2000 and used $750,000 in CDBG funding to help with that capital project. And we built both Phase One and Phase Two of the Virgil Clarkson Lacy Senior Center with CDBG funds. And we actually used $1 million in each one of those. And that was about a decade apart. So this is similar to our occasional use of CDBG for major capital projects. And if I can get my page down to work on this guy, there we go. So just real briefly, we've got about 32,000 veterans living in Thurston County. Unfortunately, a high number of those live below the property line. And an even higher number of those have a service-related disability. And unfortunately, about 23% of the suicides in Washington State, unfortunately, are veterans. So we all know that Thurston County is fortunate to benefit from having more than 80 providers and service agencies that do veteran services. But unfortunately, it can be really difficult for a vet to navigate all that. And especially if you look at the three cities and then consider the things on the base in Madigan up north that they might be accessing for medical reasons. It can be very difficult, especially if they have other kinds of challenges going on in their life. So back in, for those of you that have been around a little while, you recall it. In 2014, we teamed up with the Tacoma Vet Center and the Federal Way Vet Center to open a 1,200 square foot veteran center, community access point, about a block west of City Hall on the SPSC campus. That continued to grow in demand to the point where about two years later, we expanded that location to be 4,500 square feet. And we started asking additional partners to come and provide services there adjacent to the vet center services, including Thurston County's Veterans Assistance Fund. I believe was our very first outside service to locate there. And it's been growing and growing and growing until now we are in the process of expanding to 8,000 square feet, which is the entire building. And so an answer to our question might be, well, what's driving the need for all that additional space? Because that is quite a growth curve. And the fact of the matter is, we've got more than 60 agencies and nonprofits and other program providers that have teamed up with us. Some of them are in the facility 40 hours a week with a permanent office. Other ones are in there a couple times a week, and they actually share offices that rotate. And other ones use our, we have a pretty large training and activity room where they teach resume writing. We have yoga classes. We have musical events where people can bring in and just basically have a jam session. And that room is probably, COVID notwithstanding, is probably used six or seven days a week. So, and right along with the growth in providers, we've had a huge growth in actual client appointments at the center. And last year, 2019, it was over 7,000 client appointments. And you can see that VA benefit assistance was the top, followed by mental health counseling. Housing assistance was nearly 1,000, and all the way down to legal and education and then others, sort of on to things that people come in for that maybe not, might not be a primary service, but we always do what we can to assist them. And we have, right now, seven outside programs or agencies waiting for space. And we have no space, unfortunately. So that kind of puts that in perspective. We, Lacy, you folks have graciously allocated about $125,000 a year for contract services to facilitate the manager that we have there and to cover operating costs. Thurston County is currently contributing about $30,000 a year to cover the building lease. The VA is graduating from an outstation or from an access point to a full vet center outstation. And they have committed $500,000 to do TI to 2,500 square feet that they're expanding into. The state of Washington, as you recall, last year appropriated $10 million in capital budget funding for significant improvements to the exterior, insulation, energy improvements, ADA accessibility, low-flow features, water features in the interior, and other, like new HVAC systems, et cetera. And we are proposing that council consider funding $500,000 for tenant improvements for the 5,500 square feet that the hub, meaning our 6D partners and providers, will be expanding into. And these are preliminary schematics. They're called schematics. So it's just so we can start putting budget numbers together. And we're actually finessing budget numbers right now. But this is the upper floor. So for those that have been over there, this is the area where the hub is currently located. So that multipurpose room on the top right is the same location of the existing room. And so you can see the vet center outstation will be significantly larger than their current community access point that they're in. And then on the lower floor, this is the space that the actual hub will move down into. That used to be some engineering offices. And I believe the Attorney General years ago had some offices down there. So we'll be hopefully utilizing CDBG funding to make the tenant improvements. The building is about 40 years old. And I think in some parts in some of those offices, it's probably original carpeting. So you can see why it's in need of some TLC. And I think I'm probably about at my five minutes, so I'm going to just pause there. I guess I just, I'll respond in advance to Councilmember Cox's question. We anticipate that with the layoffs and everything else that's happening as a result of COVID, our demand for food services and mental health services and all those other services will probably grow. We are open through COVID. Some of our providers prefer not to have their field workers out in the field, obviously. But a lot of them are fine with that, with the proper precautions. And our manager is there every day during normal hours. And we're still driving the van, folks that have medical appointments that aren't, you know, something they can put off. We're still making the runs up to Madigan and that type of thing. And I just chatted with our manager Monday this week. And next week or the week following, we'll be partnering with the food bank to use that van to actually deliver food to veteran households that because of inner-city transit cutbacks on routes or other reasons that they can't leave their house to go shopping, we'll be doing grocery shopping for them. So we're excited about that. And that will be a direct response to the COVID.
Great.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I think I'll just pause there and respond to comments and questions.
Can you please close down the screen?
Sure, sorry about that.
Great, so I can see the rest of the council. So I'll start off with a quick question. You know, with this $500,000, obviously, you look at the tenant improvements. You know, with this 500,000, obviously, you look at the tenant improvements that is being done currently, there's, for the upstairs, that's about 500,000 that's being done through the federal assistance. We're obviously looking to do the, the lower floor, but it's considerably larger than the top floor, and yet it's the same basically dollar amount that you're looking at. And so I guess the question is, is how, where on these preliminary schematics, have we had any sort of bids go, come in to see if that 500,000 is even in the ballpark?
We've had rough order of magnitude, they call it ROM in the industry, which is just sort of the, sort of the first back of napkin cut, and it's a little bit more than we were anticipating. We, we, well, for instance, going back to the Senior Center, we built the entire Phase 1 of the Senior Center. And granted, it was, that was 15 or 16 years ago, but it was basically a hayfield when we started, and we built that for 1.3 million dollars. And I believe that included most of the furnishings. Those, those days are long gone. So, so yes, we have to be very creative and very resourceful, but as you know, Lacy's are very good at both of those trades.
And so the, the other quick question I have is, is what other available funding is out there possibly for, for veterans that could help us with this interior work? Is there, you know, can we reach out to Microsoft or, I, you know, I'm not sure, you know, there's been other, like the Home Depot that has been very good at, when it comes to supporting veterans? Is there any other organizations that we can maybe turn to, for help on this project other than CDBG funds?
We, we are in the midst of, or have been in the midst of researching that. Keith, as you know, is, is very talented at locating funding, and as you know, we have a consultant that also helps with some of our initiatives. And, and we, probably the biggest roadblock is, a lot of the programs and foundations are set up for nonprofits, and there's, there's, to this day is a sort of a perception, well, your government, you have plenty of money, so, you know, we're, we're not going to fund you. So, it's challenging, but we, you know, sometimes it takes us a while, but we normally get to where we need to go, and we'll keep working.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council on this proposal? Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, so with all this additional space, it sounds like you may need additional operating or cost, or you may have additional operating expenses. Is there going to be an ask in the future for more than the 125 that we're doing now?
No, so our, you know, we, we have some costs, I mean, our manager's cost, that type of thing, would, normally, we kind of just use the cost of living index like we do with other professional services for adjustments. The, the operation itself, you know, we have one full-time manager and one half-time volunteer manager, and that's it. And we hired our volunteer manager about 18 months ago, I believe, so until then, it was just the, the manager. We have 42 volunteers that staff the desk, staff the phones, do minor, you know, things around the place just to kind of keep it operating. They do the intakes with the clients, all for free, and it's, it's, well, well over $100,000 worth of labor, I'm sure, every year. And, and so, we do not, other than just normal cost of living increases for different things, we don't anticipate any kind of general operating budgets. And we, we don't charge providers for the office space. I, that's, I'm sure that's why we have 60 and we have six more waiting to come, because they have to pay their own Wi-Fi and phone and that type of thing. But the, the actual, we, we put a desk and a chair and a file box in there, and basically if they can provide a service that we feel is valuable to the veteran community, we provide the space free of charge. And incidentally, that model actually started with the Senior Center, actually in the old Senior Center over on Willow Street. The, and it exists today even at the library. We provide the facility, but we let the experts, the service provider experts, provide the services. So that's, that's sort of the way we cost share. And so, if, we will be adding a, a number of additional services to the mix because of the additional office space, but we don't pay directly for those providers. So there won't be any additional cost as a result of that either.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So Steve, if for instance, the 500,000, I noticed that you said that there is no minimum that you could accept. Is it even feasible to do some of that in a phased way so that not every facility, every provider could be housed at that time? Or get, you know, instead of six, do four people? And I'm, I'm just questioning that.
So, so, so everything is possible, but that may not be optimal. As you know, we, for instance, we have three mental health counselors that work, you know, basically 30 hours a week there. And so, in, in those types of sessions, you probably don't want hammers and saws and that type of thing in the background. So, so there's, there's probably a way we can make that work, but it's probably not the optimal approach.
Yeah, I, I guess that was my next real big question too. Obviously, the other work is going forward, it's already been to have funds available. We're, we're waiting to, really, to do the, this work on the, the bottom floor. It's, it's contingent upon funding, and this funding in particular. How soon would you get started? And would it be a, a major delay for the entire building if we, if we couldn't get funding very soon?
So, the, the existing schedule with the county and with HUD for approval in September, so, so the scenario that, that if some portion or whatever of this, of this request was approved, the, the county and HUD timeline meshes almost perfectly with our construction timeline. So that, in that scenario, there's not a problem. If, if we weren't able to access any CDBG or a limited amount of CDBG at this time, then, then, you know, obviously, we, we always try to do what we can to make it work as well as it can. And it could be that, similar to the Deputy Mayor's question, we, we could phase it. But again, because of the types of services we offer there, it wouldn't be optimal to have construction activity in the building at the same time.
Is there any other questions from, from the council about this presentation? Councilmember Greenstein? Let's see if I can. There you go.
Fund this, but to fund it at a slightly lower level, for instance, you know, as I talked about early on, 18, 19, 20% difference, whatever it is that we have available. If we were to cut all of the applicants by that much, how badly would that affect it? Would you still be able to go forward if you were to lose 20%?
We, yes, we, we would absolutely proceed, and we would just adjust as necessary, absolutely. I mean, it could be that, that, I mean, the carpeting in there is 40 years old, and it could be that a couple of the offices just have to deal with that for a while, and, but we would definitely make it work.
Thank you very much.
I think, I mean, quite frankly, when we opened four years ago, we didn't have a janitor, and I would go over there on weekends and clean the bathrooms and empty the recycling. So we'd do what it takes to make it work.
Thank you for all you've done, because you've been an integral part of the success. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will go on to our next presentation, which is from Grub, the Garden Raised Bounty Presentation. And that will be by Sadie and Beau. See if we can get them on. And I will remind them that in five minutes, my alarm will go off, you'll hear it, and that will be the time for you to wrap up your presentation.
Hi, this is Sadie Gilliam, can you hear me?
I can.
Great. And can you see my screen?
Yep.
Awesome. So, this is Sadie Gilliam, I am Grub's grants coordinator. And thank you so much for this opportunity to present. And I'm going to just give a brief overview of Grub and then pass it on to Beau Gromley, our coordinator of our Victory Farm. So Grub stands for Garden Raised Bounty. And driven by the belief that everyone deserves a place at the table, Grub's mission is to grow healthy food, people, and community. Grub serves more than 1,500 people annually, including youth, people with limited income, young children and students, tribal community members and veterans on our three-acre farm in Olympia throughout the community and at our new Victory Farm, which leads us to our project we're proposing, which is our Victory Farm, veterans and low-income families growing food security together, which is very relevant during the time of COVID-19. And now, I'm going to pass it on to Beau Gromley to introduce himself and to tell us all about the work that he's doing at the Victory Farm.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Beau Gromley, I'm the Community Food Solutions Manager for Grub, and a military veteran of both the Marine Corps and the United States Army. So, I know most of you are familiar with the Victory Farm down there in Lacey. We are partnered with the Thurston County Food Bank, and we leased a quarter acre piece of land behind that new roadside market stand. So the designation or the, the design for that lot is to grow fresh produce for Thurston County Food Bank, and to serve as an educational urban farm that's led by veterans and that provides workshops for the community. We also were gonna be providing a demonstration and learning site for our Victory Garden Project Free Backyard Garden recipients. So our Victory Farm site, again, we're, we're leasing it through the, the Thurston County Food Bank. It started out from a pretty barren lot, as most of you know, because I've seen you down there helping out from time to time. And it's really just come around to a beautiful community site that pre-COVID was really accepting of everybody within the local Lacey community and veterans from all over. And again, with your support this year, we're going to be able to build an additional five gardens down there and provide the resources for our gardeners to be successful. We're, we're providing garden workshops, seeds, one-on-one mentorship, organic veggie starts, and a whole bunch more. So our goal. Okay, our goal down there is to support the reintegration of military veterans back into the civilian community. And we do that through sharing stories, whether it's through our council meetings or council practices, through peer-to-peer support, job skill trainings, and just the physical and mental benefits of gardening. We really connect with each other and with the community members that are able to come down and connect with the, with the Victory Farm. This place was an integral part of my reintegration back into the community, and I've really made it my mission to, to do what I can to give back and share that experience with other vets and their families as they transition into our community. So how are we going to reach that goal? Well, basically, our programming is just really veteran-centric. We lead and design all aspects of the Victory Farm. We have free workshops for garden recipients that are provided by other veterans. We conduct a veterans' council and a, through a veterans' leadership team, and we grow food for a, a food-free table in the Tangle Wild neighborhood behind the farm. We've partnered with our Victory Garden Project to build more than 45 gardens a year throughout the community. This year, we're going to ramp that up to over 100. So, again, it's just the impact that we're trying to provide during this crisis, I think, is, it's really measurable. We're able to connect veterans with housing options and mental health options through some of our partners, like the Lacey Veterans Hub, the, the Washington State Veterans Association. And again, they're able to gain job skills in sustainable agriculture and connect to So we wanted to highlight just some of the, the recent feedback that we've gotten from this year, from folks from either our, our virtual workshops, through council practice, and through the gardens that we've already provided. We've been building these free backyard gardens, again, since about, we started about three weeks ago, and have had veteran volunteers from the Victory Farm already volunteer for teams and get out there in the community and help. So, again, I'm really connected to this place, and I, I appreciate your time this afternoon, and I'm looking forward to answering any of your questions.
Thank you.
And I just want to make a, a quick correction on a misspeak. This funding would provide so much more than, than five gardens. It would support the, the entire Victory Farm project through supporting Beau's time.
Great, and we'll start off with a Councilmember Cox's question about how is this gonna, how are you affected by COVID? Councilmember Cox?
Absolutely. Again, Councilmember Cox, I think our, our answer to that is regardless, we're just, we're going to grow food, we're going to do our workshops, and we're going to engage veterans. We're going to have to shift and change depending upon the best COVID practices, and that's, you know, it's pretty dynamic. But we are providing online workshops and online gatherings and really trying to connect with our previous veteran volunteers and community members on a one-on-one basis, and just make sure that they're doing all right, and really listening to them and figuring out how we can help during this time, and then trying to mindfully act upon that. We, we're really trying to spearhead how to provide these free gardens during this time, and we're doing that by really having small intentional numbers on the ground and documenting everything that we're doing and sharing that with the larger garden-building community. So not only can we cross-check what we're doing and making sure that it's, everyone's in agreeance, but just to share these practices so we can help provide these gardens on a larger footprint. And we know that more people need the skills and resources to grow this food at home and access this food via the food bank, so we're going to do what we can to help get folks their food. And then again, for the, the veteran aspect during this time, the vet population really wants to serve, and they have some great transferable skills. And I think this is the, the time of need that we can get these folks out there and, and let them help.
Does anyone from the council have any questions on this presentation? Seeing none, thank you so much for this and keep up the great work. Obviously, it's a, I think this has been, with, with the veterans who I've spoken to who've taken place with a, with a garden, it's been very helpful, and obviously now more than ever, especially with COVID-19, food insecurity is, is a real big issue, and so is mental health right now. And so, doing, you know, be able to handle both of those major issues in our communities. And I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, and we really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your support, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. So our next presentation for this Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing is going to be for Homes First, and we'll turn it over to Trudy, as soon as she can get online. And I'll remind you, Trudy, about five minutes for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me now?
We can.
Awesome. Okay, I'm going to get my, I also have a PowerPoint that I would like to present.
Trudy, can you speak up?
Yeah, can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, well, I am Trudy Sukup, I'm the CEO at Homes First, and I want to thank the mayor and the city councilors for inviting me to present tonight. Homes First is really honored to be included in the shortlist of these amazing nonprofits who are working tirelessly now and every day to make our community a better place for us all to live. The combination of the coronavirus and America's unaffordable housing system has resulted in a disquieting... has resulted in a disquieting paradox. At the same time that public health officials are warning us that staying at home away from others is essential to preventing the rapid transmission of coronavirus, huge swathes of our community are finding it harder and harder to come up with the money needed to keep a roof over their heads. The solution to homelessness is a home. As we've seen, without a safe, healthy, and affordable home in which, oh, my screen is flipping without me. Without a safe, healthy, and affordable home in which to shelter and isolate, no amount of services will result in long-term success. And that's where Homes First comes in. Since 1990, Homes First has created and maintained 46 homes with 110 units and households. We currently are serving 277 people every year and we keep growing. Eighteen of those properties are in the city of Lacey. We see a future with vibrant communities where everyone has a safe and healthy home they can afford so they can have a hope for the future, for a better future for them and their families. We have a lot of values in common with the city of Lacey. We respect our tenants. We treat them with dignity. We treat them equitably so that they can trust that we have their best needs at heart. We treat them as equals and try to connect them to support systems that they might need to be autonomous, independent, and involved in their local community. We expect them to have some personal responsibility. We encourage tenants to choose to be the creator of their own destiny, to seek solutions and take positive actions so they can find and retain a home.
Trudy, I don't mean to-
We work to empower people to make life-sustaining choices.
I don't mean to interrupt, Trudy.
Partnerships are important to us. Rather than just being the answer to all of our tenants' needs, we seek to partner with other groups and to share the load in our community. Community partnerships include the formal and informal community connections, collaborative projects, and relationships that address tenants' needs and goals. And of course, like the city of Lacey, community is so important. Building ongoing, long-term relationships with organizations which complement our program and meet the needs of our tenants is a powerful community development strategy. It makes a network of services to make our community stronger.
Trudy, do you have a screen you should be sharing right now?
Is the same now as it was before COVID started. Now is not the time to stop investing in homes because they're not only for now, they are for the future. Our proposal is, in partnership with Community Youth Services, purchase and rehab a single-family home for three to four youth in the CYS Youth Young Adult Housing Program. CYS will manage the participants in their program and ensure they learn the skills they need to be successful and independent in 2019, in 2020 and beyond. In 2019, we were able to work with CYS to house 10 of their participants and some of their children, in some cases. In May, one of those participants is moving into their own independent living situation in another Homes First property. Well, not going down there. We go, only Fed has already committed to providing additional residential mortgage support when we find the right home to purchase. So this is a collaborative project. It's valuable and a worthy investment of community funds. We're asking for $250,000. That's equal to or less than the cost to build a single rental unit in an apartment complex. That's about $300 per person served over the lifetime of a home. The benefits, however, far outweigh the cost. Our properties are affordable to extremely low-income people. We generally serve people who live at less than 50% of the area median income. But 84% of our tenants live at less than 30% of the area median income. So they are the super-low-income parts of our community. When we put a tenant in a neighborhood rather than in an apartment complex, they are becoming a part of the community again rather than apart from the community. It builds community for them. And the other benefit is no one part of our community contains all of the low-income housing. So that is my presentation and I am ready for questions.
Well, Trudy, I'm not sure if you heard me, but I, we didn't see any part of your presentation. I'm not sure if you had a-
Oh, my goodness. I thought you all said you could see it in the video.
No, I tried to jump in there and say, we couldn't see anything, but that's all right. We heard it, so that's-
Okay, you heard it. It's all good.
Let's get to Councilmember Cox's initial question first and we'll go around. I mean, is there any changes that you have made to this application, knowing what you know now with COVID-19? Or is the need still basically about the same?
The need for housing does not go away, unfortunately. In fact, it's a bigger need than ever. People cannot shelter in place if they don't have a place to shelter.
Okay, then I know Councilmember Miller had his hand up, so, Councilmember Miller?
Well, first, I wanted to point out that, you know, we couldn't see the presentation.
Sorry, I didn't hear. I was trying to get through it in five minutes to stay to your timeline.
That's all right.
We were all muted, so we couldn't help you out there. One question that I did come up with as you were making your presentation though was, are you currently leveraging any of your properties to cover costs?
So many of our properties, we can't do that because they have a lot of public funds in them and we're not allowed to use them for leverage. We do have one home that was donated to us, though, and we have used that to get a line of credit. Because unfortunately, all of these funds are reimbursable funds. So we have to pay the money out first and then apply for reimbursement. And we don't have $250,000 sitting that we can just buy a house with. So we have to have a line of credit. So the one house we have that we don't have public funds in is being used to collateralize a line of credit with Heritage Bank.
Great. Councilmember Greenstein?
Hi, Trudy.
Yeah, hi.
Just wanted, so you had mentioned you have 18 of your properties are in Lacey. How many units is that in Lacey, you know?
Oh, my goodness. Let's see. A big portion of those are shared homes. So that's probably around 60 units?
Okay. So it's over half of your total units, then?
Yeah.
Correct? Said you have about 110 units. Okay, great. Thank you.
Most of our multifamily, so we are in Lacey. We've got a really nice one in Sleater-Kinney.
Is there any other questions about this presentation? I guess that's it. Thank you so much, Trudy.
Thank you for your patience. Sorry about the follow-up. I even practiced this earlier.
No problem. It was a good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up under Presentations is the South Peget Sound Habitat for Humanity. And that will be Carly. Second, get online.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen.
Perfect.
Okay. So my name is Carly Colgan. I'm the CEO at South Peget Sound Habitat for Humanity. I wanted to just start by saying thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. I think that evidence by seeing all of you sitting in your home offices, it's very clear in our day-to-day life that things have changed and that the safety, security, and affordability of our homes is perhaps a little bit more important than it ever has been or has felt. And so I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today about this. At Habitat for Humanity, our core program is in building affordable homes, but we recognize the importance of housing on different levels. We felt that our capacity and knowledge could serve more households through the addition of a critical home repair program. So what, why critical home repairs? So the first recommendation in the city of Lacey's affordable housing strategy is to help people stay in their housing. We know that lower-income and fixed-income homeowners have trouble affording the maintenance of their homes, jeopardizing their ability to stay housed. We also know that more than 19,000 Thurston County homeowners are cost-burdened, paying more than 30% of their monthly income towards housing. Cost-burdened homeowners are vulnerable to displacement and homelessness. The Critical Home Repair Program is a prevention strategy in housing and will directly work to keep people in their homes. So what are critical home repairs? Critical home repair is extensive interior or exterior work performed to address health and safety issues as well as code violations. It includes activities such as repairs of materials, a reconfiguration of space, modifications for accessibility, modifications of plumbing, mechanical or electrical systems on an existing structure. And what our program does is takes a holistic approach to this. So when someone calls and says, "I need flooring in my bathroom replaced," we will ensure that the root cause is also addressed. So we will go in and do a full home assessment to ensure that the leaking roof that caused the flooring issue is also fixed. In terms of eligibility, when we look at who the homeowners are that we will be working with, these are the same core principles as our homeownership program. And that falls into three different categories. Willingness to partner. So we operate under a self-help model of housing and require a sweat equity component. This means that our homeowners help to build and repair their homes and the homes of their neighbors. This encourages learning skills and understanding maintenance and upkeep of their homes. So when we go and do a critical home repair, these homeowners are required to volunteer either working on their home or on other projects that we're working on in the community. The second piece of eligibility is ability to pay. So we do require that homeowners make a small payment toward the cost of their repair. This includes no-interest timeframes to keep monthly costs affordable. And our income eligibility is 30% to 80% of the area median income. The payment piece falls into our guiding principle of a hand up, not a handout. Everything that we do is in providing opportunities and affordable pathways to homeownership and keeping people in their homes. And then the third component is need, which is safety and health components that take priority. Cost burden and code violations would also qualify as need. So in terms of this program, this is a new program for our organization that was created based on the need we received in the community. In the last year, we've received more than 50 calls for critical home repairs in the community. We recognize that we're uniquely suited to be able to address this need. Habitat for Humanity International has proven processes and practices in place. Most affiliates across the country have some type of critical home repair program. And these policies and procedures have been implemented and vetted and we know that they've worked. As an organization, we're a licensed contractor and our staff have 84 years of combined construction experience. Recently, we received a $40,000 grant to purchase a van and tools specifically for this program. We also received an AmeriCorps grant and just this week have hired an AmeriCorps person to start in August as the Critical Home Repair Liaison. So that position is filled. The core objective of our program is to restore the health and safety of the homes of 60 low-income household residents during the year. And we're proposing that 10 of those projects be in the city of Lacey through this CDVG funding. So again, I just, I really appreciate the opportunity to tell you about our program today. And I want to thank you for your commitment to affordable housing in the community. I'd also like to address Councilmember Cox's question. In terms of would our application look different? Not at the base of anything in terms of the amount that we asked for. It could look different in that I think it's clear that the need is greater now. I also think that the timelines would potentially be adjusted some. Some of the projects that we had slated for March, we weren't able to do. And so we've been in a holding pattern. And so, you know, our timeline might adjust some because of that, but we were able to hire somebody during this process. So there's a little bit of faith that things will continue to move forward as is. And then, you know, I imagine that this will certainly change our safety standards and operating procedures in terms of us entering into somebody's home and how we protect our staff and how we protect the homeowners. And so some of those processes will probably look different. And those are things that we're working on now in terms of just how our construction sites and build sites look moving forward and our stores. And so I think that, you know, those different standards would come into play, but the basis of our program would remain the same.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, and then we'll go to Councilmember Greenstein.
Carly, so I just have a quick verification and depending on how you answered, I have a second question. So are these repairs on houses that have already been built by Habitat for Humanity?
No. These are homes, you know, anybody that owns their home that is considered low-income, so meets the 30% to 80% AMI and is a homeowner and can prove it there on the deed, we would work.
Okay, so my next question, how is this different than, and I'm hopefully getting the organization correct, Rebuilding Together?
Yes. So there are actually two other organizations that do repair-type work in Thurston County, and the first is Community Action Council. And so they have a weatherization program, which is very specifically, you know, to energy efficiency standards and weatherizing the home. And then there's Rebuilding Together that does free repairs and home modifications. And so, you know, we met with Rebuilding Together early part of this year to talk about what a partnership could look like. And, you know, their process is basically, you know, I would say that the main difference is that they serve the lower AMI category that can't afford to make any type of payment. And we're serving the folks that can afford to make some payment, but maybe can't afford to pay a contractor, you know, an exorbitant amount of money or pay it all upfront. We're offering a payment plan option for folks. And so that's the difference.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein? Let's see.
Hi.
Oops. Sorry.
Handout. So I love the fact that there's sweat equity in the projects. I think that's fantastic. My question is, the 55, roughly 55,000 you're requesting, how far will that go? How many homes do you anticipate you would be able to help prepare with that amount of money?
Absolutely. So, you know, our initial estimate is that that would work towards 10 homes, but that very easily could change depending on how extensive the repair project is. For example, the project that was slated to go in March that's on hold right now was a home that flooded in the Nisqually area that is about three or four feet up of gutted to the studs that needs insulation, sheet rock, painting, and flooring. And, you know, the cost with our labor was about $3,000. So, you know, we're estimating each project at $5,000, but some are gonna come in lower and some are gonna come in higher. You know, there's absolutely an opportunity that we could end up getting 13 or 14 projects out of that amount of money.
That's great, because, you know, using a contractor, I mean, if you've ever done work, and I know I've had some work done in my home, 50,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't go very far if you're hiring a contractor to work. So that's fantastic what you're able to get with that. Thank you.
Yes.
How much sweat equity are you expecting the customers put in on these projects? And does it really depend on the ability of the customer? Or are you just saying, hey, the contractor, you know, turn this wrench and, you know, hit a hammer here type of situation?
Yeah. So, you know, first, for the typical home repair, we're going to require eight hours of sweat equity in comparison to our folks that are building their own homes and we require 500 hours of sweat equity for them. Sweat equity looks very different across the board based on abilities and comfort- based on abilities and comfort levels. You know, in this case, we hope that they will be helping with their home repairs and learning the maintenance process and understanding what's going on. That's a big key component. Sweat equity also looks like we offer financial empowerment classes and opportunities for homeowners to learn budgeting so that they can afford these maintenance requests in the future and don't have to fall back on programs like ours to, you know, help fund them. And so, you know, if they're not capable or able or comfortable doing actual construction work, they can work in our office, they can work in our stores, and they can be doing sweat equity and different learning opportunities as well.
Great. Councilmember Kunkel?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to know, could you share maybe a situation where you helped some folks that were needing it? I mean, some kind of story that resonates with you, something that causes you to keep doing what you're doing?
Absolutely. You know, when I, you know, I'm going to fall back kind of out of the critical home repair realm, but we have been doing, as this pandemic started, we have been doing homeowner selection processes and going through applications for future potential homeowners. And it often weighs heavy on me to think about a family of four that rents one bedroom in a home, and, you know, one person is the provider in that family, and I know that they work the job that they're probably laid off in right now. And to think that they're sheltering in place four people in one bedroom with no income coming in is a hard concept to understand. And to think and to feel that, you know, we should be out doing more right now and building more faster because there are, for every story like that, there are hundreds more. And that's the unfortunate reality.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Miller?
Hi. So you said that you've had somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 people ask for service. Couple questions, how are you reaching them? I think it's a great program, and I'm wondering if that number, if you anticipate that number increasing over the next whatever period of time because you said that this is relatively new. Secondly, how do you determine, you know, where they fit into the AMI? Are you collecting 1099s, W-2s? What's the methodology there? I had a third one, but I can't remember it.
So in terms of, you know, the need right now, so our board came to a resolution in January approving the critical home repair program, so very new in moving forward. And we have launched the initial six months. We're still in that six-month period. Our pilot program was launched with absolutely no marketing. Everything was organic in coming to us. And so we wanted to have an opportunity to start slowly and to make sure that we were doing things in a way that worked for us internally in our processes. And so it's allowed us to create a manual, to create an understanding of the flow internally of what we're doing. And we're taking the time right now to create marketing materials and to start to move forward in actually publicizing the fact that we have this program. And we absolutely anticipate that that number will increase. And we wanted to be intentional in starting slowly and making sure that we could accommodate as many of the folks that come to us as possible. The last thing we want to do is turn somebody away that has a health and safety need in their home. Secondly, what was the second question?
Determining their position in the AMI.
Yes, so we use W-2s. We have a short application that everyone does. We use W-2s, and then we use the county assessor in terms of ensuring that they actually do own their home. We make sure that they're current with their mortgage payments. The last thing we want to do is put money into it, and then they get foreclosed on a month later. We ensure that they're up to date on their homeowner's insurance and different aspects like that. So we use a lot of the core principles of our homeownership program in terms of, you know, we have folks that go through mortgage origination training that are the ones going through these applications.
Okay, and I remember my third question now. When it comes to supplies, are you initially pulling from your own stock, from your stores, or are you going out and?
Not in terms of supplies. What we've been doing for now is we've been using our construction staff and our construction new-build tools. We just got a grant for tools, so we'll be able to purchase tools specifically for this program and not have to borrow between the two. But no, we will certainly leverage our discounts and our relationships with different home improvement stores and subcontractors in terms of, we're not going to be the ones going in and doing electrical and plumbing work, but we certainly have relationships with electricians and plumbers that will be able to pass along our good standing with them and our prices to the homeowners as well as the opportunity to finance.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if you need some 2x6 or some 4x4, do you pull from the Habitat store first, or do you go to Lowe's?
We would go to Lowe's first, just because the donors that are donating things to our stores are donating them with the intention of them being sold to create affordable housing. We certainly could change some of the language that we use to market how we use the store's revenue, but we certainly don't want to mislead donors in terms of what we're using the funds from the stores for.
Thank you.
Great. Are there any other questions from the council? I just want to, again, thank you. I, you know, I love what you guys do, and this is a really great program. Anyone who's, I have an older home, and so I have projects all the time that need to be done in my house. And every time you get a quote for what you think was a simple project, it ends up being a very expensive project. So I can only imagine people who are, you know, financially struggling and they have a home repair that needs to be done, there hasn't been a lot of options. There's a couple organizations, but for, you know, the average person who's just trying, you know, sort of living paycheck to paycheck, homeownership can be expensive, especially if you're in an older home. And so I really appreciate what you're doing, and I absolutely love your model as well. It's a great model, and we have a long, long relationship with Habitat as well. So we appreciate all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to our last presentation, which is the Thurston County Food Bank presentation. Robert and Judy, we'll get them on here. Give them time for their about five-minute presentation. There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Can you see my presentation?
Not yet. You're going to have to share it. There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Wonderful. So, good evening. I'm Judy Jones. I'm the Development Director with the Thurston County Food Bank, and I want to thank you for allowing us to share a little bit about how far we've come and where we would like to go over the next year. I am in Robert Coit's office in our Warehouse Distribution Center. We are still, as an essential service, we are still working. I'm going to start the presentation off with a PowerPoint, and then Robert will finish by answering your questions. So again, thank you for joining us. This project started three years ago. We were designated as the first compassionate community project by the city, the chamber, and the school district. I want to share a little bit about the story, how it started, and what we've been able to do. So how it began was with a derelict building. Imagine abandoned vehicles that were rusted out, illegal dumpings of cyclone fences and what appeared to be a dog kennel, piles of tires. And inside the buildings were actually some beautiful and creative graffiti images of Seattle's skyline. We weren't able to save those, but they were beautiful art. Our first project was that Victory, the Veterans Victory Farm that Bo talked about. Imagine the gorgeous, bright orange carrots that were harvested this last season, deep amber honey from bees that are very happy, and veterans, both active and retired, working together, supporting each other, digging in brown, rich dirt with their children and grandchildren, seeking to maintain or find that balance in life. Next was the community art sculpture. The apple symbolizing a universal food system, two hands, a father and son, connecting generations. And the leaves at the base and around the walkways represent unique and handcrafted images by North Thurston Public School students. Then the farm.
We might have just lost your, there you go.
Deep forest green kale. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we lost your audio for a second, but you're back.
Okay, thank you. So deep forest green kale from Helsing Junction, colorful rainbow shard from Calliope Farms, and delicate delicata squash from the Seeds of Change garden. When the weather finally broke, imagine bank tellers, a small business owner, an insurance agent on their hands and knees planting wild strawberries as ground cover. There was a realtor, a dental hygienist, and a banker planting trees for future shade. And finally, a landscaper, a consultant, and a grants manager spreading aromatic cedar bark, all of them inspired by a Rotarian motto of service above self. This brings us to today. Imagine a mother of four filling her grocery cart at this Lacy's food pantry. Imagine her selecting the food that her family enjoys eating, everything from the ground turkey that she places in her grocery cart to the fresh vegetables that she'll roast for dinner, sliced bread for lunches, and milk to help bodies grow strong. Our timeline for this pantry began with the first and second quarters with remodeling and building that gorgeous image you saw earlier. The third quarter was to open the pantry just in time for the Thanksgiving dinner boxes to go home with folks with a turkey to roast. The third and fourth quarters to make those finishing touches, to make it just right and improve what we've been practicing for years downtown. And then the coronavirus hit. I have to say that since the coronavirus, our project has been halted. We've made an appeal to the Thurston County Commissioners. We are optimistic that we will be able to resume building and construction and finish this project on time. And the question might be tonight, where are we at in this project? And I need to get up to give you a little visual.
You're going to need to close down your presentation so for us to see you, if that's the case.
All right, and... I have to figure out how to do that.
Just have to exile there, I think.
See if that did it.
Nope, you're still up. There you go.
There we go. All right. So here we are. We have raised to date $2.1 million. If we are successful in getting Community Development Grant money, we will move up to our $2.5 million of a $3.3 million project. The good news is regardless of the pandemic, we are going to move forward, and we've also secured funding through our bank to continue and finish the project. At this point, I am going to pass it on to Robert, but I thank you for your time, and I hope this has illuminated sort of the experiences that I've been witness to over the last three years.
Thank you. Real quick, Robert, and we'll get to some questions.
I'm just going to answer your tough questions, so I encourage you to ask them.
Okay, then we'll go on to questions. I guess, dude, I guess you can first maybe expand upon the ongoing question of COVID-19 and how has this affected? Obviously, construction right now has been shut down, unfortunately, although I would consider you guys essential. And so, but that's a tough call, obviously. What other issues besides, from what I've heard is that, you know, your services have gone, the need for your services have gone way up. Where are you typically this time of year? And where are you now because of this crisis when it comes to the food going out and the need in the community?
So COVID-19 certainly changed our business model. So as much as I dearly love the opportunity to give people the choices to choose the food to take home, we time-traveled back to 2005 and basically have pre-done bags and boxes of food. We were able, over the last few weeks, to fold back here in boxes of produce, boxes of bread, boxes of dairy, and boxes of deli items. But to be both fast enough and to practice social distancing, we basically had to change our business model. So much like construction, choice went away. As far as demand goes, it is definitely up, about 20% from March of last year. And in large measure, it's due to very strong collaborative partnerships. So you heard earlier this evening, one agency described food being delivered via Head Start and E-CAP. We're the ones boxing that food and providing it to EST 113. So that's about 800 children a week. Our Four Kids School Backpack Program has essentially been providing twice as many food bags through the North Thurston School District and Olympia School District. And essentially, we've upgraded the quantities and quality. So we're moving away from individual servings to full cans of soup, full boxes of mac and cheese, et cetera. And the last one has been drive-up food banks. We've operated one at St. Martin's University twice now, once on the 9th of April, and then earlier today. Today, we serve 264 drive-up vehicles. So 264 households were able to get services quickly, practicing social distancing in a way that they felt comfortable. So what does that mean in English? Demand is up. Unfortunately, the longer this goes on, our likelihood of seeing demand go down in the future is pretty much nil. We're pretty much using as a planning purpose the 2009 recession as far as numbers and percentages of growth. But it could be worse, and the recovery could look different. So what does that mean? I spent $250,000 buying food in the last six weeks. That's my entire budget for last year, primarily because we rely so heavily on fresh and frozen, and moving to shelf-stable is extremely expensive. It's not our standard business model. Canned goods are not typically donated anymore. What is donated from businesses is typically fresh. What is donated from businesses is typically fresh and frozen food. So, it's kind of rocking our world. On the positive side, there's a statewide initiative to provide food during the months of May, June, and July. It's a consortium of the big three, such Food Lifeline, Northwest Harvest, and Second Harvest. Each county will receive an allocation of their work and successes. We're the lead agency for Thurston County, so we've been asked to build 5,000 food boxes a week starting the first week of May. To give you some perspective, we're currently building about 1,500. So, after my initial shock from the first email, we went into problem-solving mode. That's a lot of food boxes. We'll be receiving the food in bulk and expected to build our own. So again, it'll be the strengths of partnerships and relationships that make that happen. That's a damn long answer, I apologize.
That's all right.
It's certainly what we're all thinking about.
Yep. Does the council have any questions for Robert? Councilmember Cox?
Robert, this isn't a question, it's a thank you. I just, it means so much that you all are coming out to Lacy and having those stations where people can come and collect food and do it in a safe way. So bless you for that.
Thank you. Anything else? Deputy Mayor?
So, I had heard from someone else that during this time, the Thurston Food Bank has, County Food Bank has not concentrated so much in Olympia, but more moved out to a bunch of satellites because, one, because of transit, but I'm not sure whatever else. Is that correct? So, are you, is that what you're seeing both in Lacy and other areas? Or is that true?
So, there's some truth to that, but it's not entirely accurate. So, the Thurston County Food Bank runs a system of 32 smaller food pantries throughout the county. So, what does that mean in English? It means we send food out to a number of other organizations. It's their name on the door, our food that they're giving out. Again, it's that collaborative partnership. 14 are what we refer to as satellite food banks, which means they're pretty close to our organization, and they basically have a responsibility of sending us monthly reports. So, our numbers are their numbers, their numbers are our numbers. They're folded in the totals we share with the public. We could not reach so many people without that network. And we have another 14 to 15 mobile sites where we deliver to a neighborhood, deliver to a senior housing complex, operate in the community center, and then go back home after 30 minutes. So, we've always had a big, strong network. What you're hearing, though, is our efforts to build a network of these mobile drive-up food pantries. So, St. Martin's was the first. We have entered into a contractual arrangement with Evergreen Christian Center on Olympia's west side. We have the early phases of contracts in place to operate a drive-up at the Mountview Church on Israel Road in Tomwater. We're in early contract negotiations with the Evergreen State College to operate a drive-up. And we're currently trying to find a location in Rainier in addition to what we do in Rainier. So, for us to give out those 5,000 boxes, we'll need a robust system of drive-up food banks. That's what I think you're hearing from the community.
So that isn't because of the COVID-19 change of how you're doing things?
So the drive-ups are directly related to the COVID-19, without a doubt.
Great. Is there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And we appreciate all the presentations that were given today. Of course, we always know that the need is great, and we wish we, you know, our budget was twice as much. But we're, we have what we have. And so, thank you, Robert. And I'm going to close this CDBG public hearing. Not sure where, not sure where that came back, that audio is from. The next discussion, though, that we have now that the...
That was me, because I was watching them before.
Now that the public hearing is closed. For the new, for the new council members, just a reminder that in years past, once we've gotten to this point, we would always go to a work session to discuss these, this in more in-depth, and then also sort of try to figure out the math. On top of that, we also are in discussions with Thurston County because, in the city of Olympia, because there's been, through the CARES Act, we have received additional funds for COVID-19 in particular through the Community Development Block Grant. And so, we've had some initial conversations with our partners since we, this CDBG is a partnership between the county, the city of Lacy, and the city of Tomwater. But we've also had a conversation with the city of Olympia saying, you know, with additional funding that's coming to this region through CDBG, is there a way for us to work together and have a more collaborative approach? Maybe a better impact, a greater impact for use of those funds? That conversation is still happening. We will be talking to all those partners again tomorrow at our weekly meeting. But we haven't come to a final, you know, conclusion on how that's gonna go forward. I said, you know, at the very least, you would think that the three partners who are involved in this, you know, would get, you know, a third, a third, a third. I think that's one opportunity. The other opportunities, now let's keep the funds together. Maybe bring in some Olympia funds as well. And let's look at this holistically on what we can do specifically on COVID-19. But that is an ongoing conversation. I'd really suggest that we would need to have that information plus another conversation with this council, looking into, you know, these funds a little bit more on where we're at and go from there. But Councilmember Greenstein, you have a question? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, my question, how much is that additional money? It was two something, wasn't it? Do we know that figure?
We do. Steve, I think you talked about earlier, I think it's actually another almost quarter of a mil, 700 and something thousand.
So, the, and actually, John, our technical guy, if you can bring the county staff in, we can put them on and then get the direct information. I believe it's about $700,000. So let's let him do that. So, if you two don't mind introducing yourselves briefly and just telling what department you're in. I'd do that, but I did part of that wrong. Council will know who we're chatting with here.
Okay. I am Jacinda Stelches. There we go. Public Health and Social Services with Thurston County.
And I'm Tom Webster, Program Manager of the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention with Thurston County. I don't know why it says I'm Jacinda. I will rename myself.
All right.
There we go.
So, Tom, did you hear the question the mayor just had?
Yes. So, the county did receive 717,000 of CDBG COVID funds, which are separate than our entitlement funds. And these are funds specifically intended to be used for the prevention and response to COVID, the COVID outbreak.
Okay. And where are we at in the process of talking to Olympia and looking at their funds and these funds and trying to come up with a holistic approach, a regional approach to the use of these funds?
I think your description was accurate. Those conversations are ongoing. We presented this information to our Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday. They had some thought, but asked us to continue these discussions. I know the county manager's had discussions with his counterparts. And so, those conversations continue. And I don't know where, where or when they will kind of be concluded. But you're correct that those conversations continue to determine the process by which these funds will be allocated.
Great, thank you. So, Scott Spence, can you give us an idea of a timeline of maybe when we can, this council can meet? Probably through, of course, through a Zoom meeting and go through these applications and our next steps on this? I just don't, I feel like we need to have another conversation and before we just go straight into allocating these funds. I'm open to the rest of the council's suggestion, but in years past, we've always gone to a work session to go a little deeper in depth through the applications and before we make a funding decision. So, do you have a suggestion about that, Scott?
So, given COVID-19, the initial thought is that we'd have another council meeting on May 14th, and we could take a deeper dive, and we can talk about council's wishes in terms of what the funding level should be for each application. We may know more information, too, about the regional discussion, if there's gonna be other dollars, other partnerships. We should have capacity at our next meeting to have a fuller discussion about that. I think we could use the shared screen to, you know, put all the numbers on Excel spreadsheet, and we can actually go through each line item and see if we actually could meet the budget allocation.
That sounds good. Does anyone have a question, any council, a deputy mayor?
I agree. We need to further discuss this in some ways where we can lay things out and look at the numbers and stuff. My question with bringing in Olympia, would there be organizations that would appeal to them that would not necessarily be presented to us? I don't know that. I'm just throwing that question out. Would it change, who would be appealing to for CDBG funds for, from, to Olympia?
I think those, like we have all have mentioned, we're early in on the conversations of a regional approach, what that would look like. The city of Olympia, as it's been stated here, has their own annual allocation because they're a capital city. So, and these additional funds through the CARES Act is, as it's been said, is specifically for COVID-19. And so, I think we need to continue to have those conversations on what that eventual partnership is gonna look like. So.
Okay, okay. But I definitely agree, we need to have another conversation later.
Councilmember Greenstein, then we'll go with Councilmember Cox.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna say, my original plan, because I didn't know that we would have time for, you know, in our current situation, not really having work sessions, I had actually worked up a motion, but I'm gonna, I'm not gonna present that motion because I do think we should at least hear what's gonna happen and, you know, figure out those other funds before we make any final decision.
Absolutely. Councilmember Cox?
We do have April 30th, next Thursday, is blank. So, it might, you know, if you think we would be far enough along in our knowledge by then, would it be possible to schedule a work session then? I'm trying to be sensitive to the needs of the county staff. Ideally, they want our package and decisions by May 15th, which, you know, puts that pretty darn close to the line. They could give us a week of wiggle room, but that's it unless we choose to go another path with CDBG this year.
Scott?
We definitely could have a special meeting if council chose to do so. Also, maybe look to Tom, too. If council decided to, of the $1 million that we have for this annual allocation, decided, say, take a percentage and even combine it with the greater, I'll say, COVID-19 CDBG, is that even a possibility? Or is that something where, do we need to keep both of those separate?
And I'll look to Jacinda as well here, but I believe you need to keep those separate. So, it is a separate process, a separate annual action plan that we submit to HUD for these funds. So, they will be separate. I will. A little bit of context or background in terms of the timing. Generally, we are required to submit our annual action plan to HUD by July 15th. We need to publish that annual action plan and allow a 30-day public comment period, which is why we usually ask for your list of projects by mid to late May so we can complete that plan, put that out around the 1st of June for public comment, and then hold a public hearing at the end of June, and then make any final adjustments before it's submitted before July 15th. That is still the requirement for the CDBG entitlement funds. However, HUD has granted a waiver. If you intend to use your 2020 CDBG entitlement funds for COVID-related activities, we can push that deadline back, really as much as a year. I don't think the county would want to push it back that far. But if you did want to direct some of your Lacy CDBG funds to COVID activities, then we do have more flexibility to submit our annual action plan to HUD at a later date. So that gives us a little bit more leeway in terms of when you would need to make your decision.
So, that's a...
But if you do with non-COVID-related activities, then we're still following that July 15th final deadline for submission to HUD.
And what is the definition of COVID activities? Every single person who presented today said they've been impacted by COVID-19. And so, in our case, and every single one of our potential funding, you know, opportunities here has been a COVID-19 project, right?
I would say, first of all, the HUD has not provided clear guidance on what it means by a COVID-related response. So there's a fair amount of ambiguity in that definition. In a webinar I was on, there was a lot of questions around that. I would argue, however, probably that the projects presented would not be directly tied enough to COVID-19 to qualify. They're looking specifically for, you know, perhaps if the food bank at that was going directly to providing food, but for a construction project, for a general distribution center, would probably not meet the intent of being very specific to preventing or responding to COVID.
Great. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stedman, can you please unmute yourself?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's part of the topic, but on a sidebar, us being a 50,000-person city now, isn't there a different funding, a different way we can get that money? And having it be annually, too, something we should, if that's the case, something we should probably discuss also?
Yeah, that's a, that's a separate discussion. And I know we do qualify for that. That would require a big conversation with our partners if we were to do that. But that is a, obviously, it's a separate conversation, but well, well taken. Does anyone else, do you have another question besides that? No? Okay. I think Councilmember Cox, can you please unmute yourself? I'll unmute you, just a second. There. There, well. Dying here. There you go.
Thank you. I was trying to say, could you let Councilmember Miller go first? I think he's had his hand up before me.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry I missed that. Go ahead, Councilmember Miller.
It's probably something that we're gonna answer later on, but by my calculations, we're 19.07% short of the ask. And so, are we, are we saying that, you know, there's a possibility that with these funds, we can fill in that 19.07%? Or am I reading that wrong?
I think you're reading that wrong. I think it's the COVID-19 additional funds through the CARES Act, it's gonna be through a separate process.
Okay. So, as it is now, we could supply 80.934% of what was presented tonight.
Yeah. If we, if we chose to go that direction and reduce everyone equally, that is an opportunity. I think we'll, I think we'll need to have some more discussions about that if that's the way we decide or not. Let's go to Councilmember Cox, and then we'll go Scott. Do you have, do you have something? Councilmember Cox?
Yes, I do. You know, I think everybody who presented today made a really, really compelling case. And I think what we heard largely was that, yes, they would continue on with their same thing, even though they are being pretty heavily impacted by COVID already, and who knows what's gonna happen down the line. With that said, and Tom Webster, feel free to jump in and make sure I get this right. But there is another opportunity for us to say, to take a step back and say... But there is another opportunity for us to say, to take a step back and say, could we go through another process, could we declare, we want to use our CDBG money this year for COVID, and then go out and apply, you know, excuse me, go out and request new proposals? Certainly, you know, the proposals we have could either stand or be amended, but there may be some others that come in the door, too. And, you know, it's, it's a trade-off in my mind. You know, it means people are going to get the help later down the line, but I just, my, my big concern here is that, you know, we only get this chance once every three years. We're under tremendous strain, under, you know, a situation where we're kind of flying blind with our budget, and I just want to get this as right as we possibly can, because we're not going to get another chance for three years.
And I think that's a discussion that we're going to have at our next work session, whether that be next Thursday or in May. Scott, you want to, you have something?
Yeah, just, just a question for the county. The $718,000 that was COVID-related, even though it was given to the CDBG fund, was that because Thurston County is an urban county, and it's due to the partnership that we have with Lacey, Tombwater, and the southern cities of the county?
That's a question for someone from the county? Tom?
Yeah.
I think you're muted there.
Yep, sorry about that. So yes, there was $5 billion set aside from the CARES Act for CDBG. $2 billion of that was set aside and allocated based on the entitlement formula that HUD uses to distribute to all the CDBG jurisdictions. So Thurston County's allocation was based on the same formula they used to distribute the entitlement funds.
Great. I was under that impression as well, reading through the CARES Act. Councilmember Stedman?
So my point earlier, I believe that if, because we're 50,000-person city now, that we would get that funding every year if we went that route, correct? So that could, you know, if we did the COVID-19 thing this year, next year, if we went that route, we'd get that funding annually, as per three years.
That's true, that's a, that's a totally separate conversation, because we can't go retroactive, but yes, I, that's a future conversation. Deputy Mayor?
So is it possible, and I was just thinking of process, so we have seven CDBG grants to decide now, and then the county has 700,000. Could, then we come back and try to get organizations to apply for that? It could be some of the same ones, yes? And so sometimes, for instance, I'm just going to throw out the food bank. So they may get something now, and then the county, when they do the CARES Act, they could get some more with that, correct? Or is that not possible? Or what's the process between the two?
We're, we're still, Deputy Mayor, we are still in the process. We know what the process is for, for our funding right now, we're going through it. The CARES Act dollars, that, that process has not been agreed upon between all the partners in the county, and, including if the city of Olympia might somehow contribute to that as well. We're, hopefully, we're going to be having those conversations as soon as possible, and we're going to try to figure it out. Councilmember Kunkel, can you please unmute yourself?
So this is off-topic, this is actually a technical question. My iPad is going to die any second, and I need to fall in to stay in this meeting. I'm not sure how to do that.
Well, first of all, do we have any other more questions for the county, or anything at all? Let's see if we, Steve?
So if I could ask John to share my screen quickly, I apologize, I thought I had this up during my conversation, and I did not on my introductory remarks. So I just wanted to make sure the public saw the City Clerk email to provide comments, if they'd like to do that, and will be accepting written comments until 12 noon on the 27th of April. And those comments will be made part of the record for the hearing.
Great. Thank you very much. Technical, technical staff, can you give us some direction to the two council members who may lose their, the power on their phone? Do you have any way to plug it in, Councilmember Kunkel, or?
It is plugged in.
I call them separately.
Yeah, it's not charging fast enough, it's just, it is what it is, so.
Okay. Do we have any advice, technical advice, on for them to call back in?
There could be a phone number to call in, I don't know what that is.
Pardon me, council, I just emailed the phone number to Councilmembers Kunkel and Stedman.
Great, great, thank you. So we do need to make a decision if, when we're going to meet next to discuss this. Are we going to wait till the fifth?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Can, who's?
What's the meeting ID?
Should be on your-
It's a webinar, there's no ID.
So Scott, do you have a suggestion on next steps here?
Yeah, I think we still have the opportunity to have a discussion on May 14th. I think we need, I think we need a little bit more time to figure out what the regional discussion is going to be. I think that may give us a little bit more time to figure out what the COVID requirements are going to be also, so council can have an informed discussion if they want to maybe do a different process.
Yeah, I kind of agree, too, on this. I just feel like by next Thursday, we're not going to have enough information necessary to have had the regional discussions and process and everything else to be able to come up with informed decisions for this council on a process going forward. Councilmember Greenstein?
It seems to me, though, that this, the additional COVID money, the 7/11, whatever it was, is going to be a complete, a separate process regardless of whether, how, you know, whatever that process winds up being, it's still going to be a separate process. So I'm not sure that this process has to wait that long. It's just, it seems like that's putting it off.
Yeah.
Isn't there, I mean, and don't we have another meeting prior to that? We have, aren't we having another meeting two weeks from now?
It's a, it's a fifth Thursday.
Yeah, it's a fifth Thursday.
Oh, right. Gotcha.
So, so-
I mean, if that's what everyone feels is best, you know, it's fine by me, but, I mean, I have no problem having a special meeting into next Thursday, Thursday after, whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could go to that, I think next Thursday is going to be too soon. And the only reason, right, you're right, there's going to be a separate process, but we may, by through these, some regional discussions, want to pull some money back for COVID-19, which would kind of change the process. It's just, it's, there's so many moving parts right now, and, and Councilmember Cox is right, you know, we, let's, let's get this one right, for sure, especially if, if there is a major impact by COVID-19 that we haven't really taken into account, and maybe we need to move a little bit of this funding over to help, I don't know that, but that's why we have the conversation.
I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as it's not going to delay the county being able to get the information, because it sounds like they really, you know, we need to have something to them by the end of May, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I just don't want to delay that process.
So are we okay with May 14th? What's the date? Scott?
It'd be 14th.
May 14th?
It'd be May 14th.
So everyone, is everyone okay with May 14th? I'm, I'm okay with it, I think that's enough time. Yes? Okay. Thank you. You have something real quick, Councilmember Cox?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure with staff, if we're making, I mean, even if it's a drop-dead decision on the 14th, does that give you time to get stuff bundled over to the county the next day? Is that a yes, Steve?
We will make it work.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the county for coming on and answering a few questions, we, we really appreciate it. So-
We'll make it work with whatever your timeframe needs to be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is resolutions, resolution to extend the emergency declaration related to COVID-19. Back to Scott, or Dave?
Mayor and City Council, just very simply, when we passed Resolution 1085, we put a, an emergency declaration ending date of April 28th, and as you know, that was before the restaurants shut down and before the Stay Home, Stay Healthy order came about, which has now been extended officially to May 4th. So the suggestion in this new declaration, at least extend it to May 28th, which would be your last council meeting in May. And you could always, depending on, well, no more information at that point, we'd either extend it or rescind it.
So can I, can I get a motion? Lenny, want, give me the motion?
I actually have a question. What's the, I mean, I don't mind making the motion, what exactly does the motion need to say?
To extend the, well, I'll, I'll move, sure, go ahead.
Recommendation would be to approve Resolution 1088, extend the provisions of Resolution 1085, declaring an emergency in the city of Lacey regarding the outbreak of Nobel Coronavirus COVID-19 in Thurston County.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moving to second now, discussion, Lenny?
Now I have a question. So would it make more sense, Scott, and I don't know if we can do this, instead of putting an end date on it, put the date on it to end when the governor's order ends? Or is it, do you need a firm date?
You know, I could have Dave weigh, weigh in this one, too. I think it's whatever council is comfortable with. I think we just didn't want to, an extended declaration would just sort of an undefined timeline.
You know-
So Dave, do you have a thought on that?
And I have, I have a similar thought, because I was thinking, May 28th is not going to be long enough. We know this is probably going to go into, you know, into June, and, I mean, I know we can always come back into May and do it another month, but to think that we're going to get through this emergency time by the end of May is, is, I think, pretty optimistic as well. But Dave, what's your suggestion?
Yes, there's certainly options on language that we can use. We settled on May 28th, just because we're going to have two more council meetings prior to then, that we're going to have more information then. If we want to square it with the, with the governor's order at that time, we can. We could certainly craft language now to do that.
Okay. I think, Lenny, you had your hand up first, and then we'll go to Ed.
Yeah, so my question is, if things do improve, and if the, so we don't, at this point, we know the order is still May 4th from the governor. Most people anticipated extending that, but we don't know that. If this ends earlier, we could also end this earlier, even if we put a date of 28th, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Councilmember Kunkel?
Yeah, I wanted to mirror what Councilmember Greenstein said. I don't believe we should extend it any further than we need to, and I would like more clarity in understanding what our governor is planning before we extend it to the end of May, or the end of any month, for that matter. I just don't feel that we have the clarity to go beyond what the Stay Home, Stay Healthy ordinance is already, where we're at already.
So I think you, you might be, you might be confusing this emergency declaration with any of our, what we're doing internally. Really, the emergency declaration, for the most part, just allows us to purchase things without going out to bid, and really sort of streamlines some operations within the city of Lacey. It also allows us to continue to be able to apply for any emergency grants, and usually part of the grant process is that you had to declare emergency, you have to be in an emergency. And so you can, you know, expand upon that as well, Scott, but it's, it's not a super, you know, additional powers here. Scott, you want to explain about that? Or Dave?
It actually, it actually will extend those provisions, because those resolutions are in effect for the duration of the, of the emergency as declared by council. So extending this will, those other resolutions, or the other resolution modifying council procedures would automatically be extended for the duration of the emergency.
Oh, that's a, okay. Well, then, we definitely should, should keep it in May and re, you know, yeah, if things change, if this, if things change with the state, then we can immediately come back in a council meeting and end the emergency declaration, or modify it as well, where maybe we're getting back to some of our normal, normal procedures within the city of Lacey, but we're going to extend it, the emergency declaration, so we are eligible for, you know, grants or something else, but take out some of the procedures that we threw into the, into this emergency pursuit. I think that's, does anyone else have a question? Okay, it's in, it's been moved and seconded to extend this emergency declaration related to COVID-19. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unmute. Aye, aye, aye. Are there any, are there any nays? Then the motion carries. Thank you. Next up, city manager, COVID-19 budget strategy.
So as council's aware, and I think council's been actually concerned about this from the beginning, that COVID-19 has actually started to affect the economy. As a city, we're obviously not immune to the impacts of the economy, and as you all know, I think you guys are particularly acute to this, that if we do not have a healthy local economy, that's going to affect our ability to provide essential services. So I have a presentation that I'd just like to give, in terms of a high-level overview of how we're going to respond to COVID-19, in terms of a budget process, and I'll attempt to share the screen with you. Can everyone see that, where it says national economy?
Yes.
Great. So I'm not going to bore you with a whole bunch of graphs, which I tend to do sometimes, but I just want to kind of highlight some key sectors of the economy that I think is important to point out. One is unemployment, and this is a justification why we need to be careful with our own government budget. So over the past five weeks, 26 million Americans have applied for unemployment. That is a significant number. It's hard not to ignore the impacts what COVID has done really to all sectors of the economy. Just from mid-March to the end of March, 13 million jobs have been eliminated. So for context, if you took the 2007 and 2009 Great Recession, that was more like 9 million jobs. So you can kind of see how deep, basically, COVID-19 has affected really the economy. When you think of air travel, I was surprised about this one. So April 14th, TSA screened 90,000 passengers. A year ago, that was 2.4 million. So again, that's a dramatic impact in terms of how Americans travel in the United States, and just all the business activity associated with that, with the airline industry. Hotels, as you know, the hotel tourism industry has probably been hit hardest when it comes to COVID-19. Hotels are running about 20% and declining. I know locally, we've checked in with ours, and it's maybe closer to 10% to 12%. So again, that's another barometer in terms of how deep the COVID-19 has hit the economy. And then just oil consumption, that is, you've probably seen in the news lately, that actually futures were trading zero for oil. I don't think that's been seen maybe since the Great Depression. So they think that oil demand, which is really a barometer of economy and transportation and business activity, is going to drop anywhere from 20% to 35%. So we've made some assumptions in terms of what we think this is going to do to our budget. I want to highlight some of those things from our major revenue sources. So in preparing for sort of the impacts to the budget, we think our sales tax could be impacted as high as 30%. BNO and sales tax follow pretty much the same, so we're also projecting a 30% decline of revenues with BNO. Parks and Rec, as you know, has been one of the most immediately impacted city services, so we're looking really about a 50% impact to just that area. State shared revenue, kind of unclear on what they're going to do with their stimulus dollars from the federal government, but we're at least are projecting a 10% decline of that. Other taxes are really admission and gambling tax, so think of your theaters. So we think that's going to be about a 44% decline in that revenue source. And then interest come. Just a week ago, or actually, a month ago, we could get 2%. Now that's closer to 0.25%. So that's an important revenue source that we relied on in our general fund. So we're projecting pretty much 6.32 million in terms of losses for revenue. That's roughly about 11-plus percent of our budget. I think it's important to kind of look of, kind of where we've been with COVID. It seems like a long time ago, but it was just March 13th when we declared the emergency in response to COVID. That coincided with statewide school closures, and also the limitation on large gatherings of 250 or more. Three days later, you recall, they shut down restaurants and bars, and then put further restrictions on gathering at 50- restrictions on gathering at 50. And then, you know, really, a week later, the stay home, stay healthy order came into effect, and that was at that time thought to be in effect until April 6th. That was extended on April 2nd to May 4th, which we're still under. And then in April 6th, the schools announced they would not have a school year. So that's really kind of the timeline that we've been dealing with, with COVID. And I wanted to show how we responded with some of these milestone dates. So first, really about two days later, once the shutdown affected restaurants and bars, we immediately suspended new hires and part-time staff. So not a lot of savings, but we do have some employees or some positions that were being advertised that we suspended immediately. So there's some immediate savings there. We also suspended capital projects. We made the decision that, can those projects go forward? Why don't we take those one-time savings and find out where we're going to be with the economy, since we really just don't know? That was a little bit more money. We also had to furlough part-time staff, and that primarily affected parks, the parks program. We're not having any park programs. Those positions can be worked from five hours a week to 20 hours a week, but we're not providing those programs, so those employees were actually furloughed. So that was a little bit more savings. The reason we have operating reserves is to basically deal with uncertain times, and clearly, there's a lot of conjecture and predictions about what the economy is going to do. Is this going to be a V, so we're going to have this huge drop off, and then somehow, once everything's lifted, it's going to come right back? Is it more of an L, where it's going to drop, and then you have a sort of a long extension, and then maybe, I guess, it'd be more of a U, and then come back, and it would take a long, almost as similar to like a Great Recession? But again, that's all speculation, because we just don't know yet. But we have 3.6 million in our operating reserves. As you know, council has a very good fiscal policy. We have two one-month operating reserves, so we actually have another $3.6 million. But we would tap into that, given the fact that, as you know, the state agreed to delay BNO taxes for businesses, and then also Department of Revenue decided to allow businesses to delay their sales tax payments to local government until late June. So we're not going to have a great or a clear picture, really, what the, the economic impact of COVID-19 is, probably until August. So then staff went through an exercise of looking at other things that they can basically reduce. So we went through an exercise of spending just equipment purchases, although minor, everything does help. And then the last part was just overall department reductions, and we came up with about $2 million worth of savings. So all told, that is going to be about the $6.32 million, that's how we're going to respond to the revenue loss. Proud of the staff and the directors for coming up with a plan that, in a sense, minimizes the impact to the community. I think this, even though this is a steep reduction to our revenue base and also service cuts, I think this can be minimized in terms of the public, it's not going to fill the full impacts of that. And it also keeps the organizational integrity of staff, so this does not predict any furloughs or layoffs. One thing I did want to point out, because this was in a 2020 budget that we talked about in 2019, and some, these are some of the target reductions that are in some of those one-time actions. So there was the neighborhood grant program. This would be our suggestion to actually eliminate that program in response to COVID-19. The sister city program is not much deduction as it is. We had money in there anticipating a higher cost for their insurance. They were able to find less expense insurance, so they don't need this additional $10,000. So that has been reduced. We projected, or we're going to do a playground replacement project down at Bush Park, $150,000. That will be eliminated, we'll just have to revisit that in future years. We had money set aside for a Northeast Lacey market study to kind of continue to work on our economic development goals. Again, $50,000. You may recall, we talked a lot about the midtown amenities and trying to do certain things to better define that area. Again, given what we're dealing with, that seems more of a luxury than maybe a priority. And then you also recall, we had long discussions with Port of Olympia. We had not finalized the MOU with them for $212,000, which was going to be a partnership to, one, look at industrial incubators and do tenant improvements. We've not finalized that, we're still in discussions about that, but again, given that time, we'd like to take those savings and actually use that for our budget problems right now. I do want to maybe provide a little bit of positive narrative when it comes to COVID-19. There's been a lot of gloom and doom when it comes about the economic impact. I think we still need to remind ourselves that we are in Thurston County, and the state government is a stable employer. That is a foundational part of our economics when it comes to providing services and getting revenue. So I think that's a positive. Joint Base Los Angeles Corps is the largest employer in the region, I don't think we can forget about that. They're not necessarily affected by COVID-19. Obviously, North Thurston Schools just passed a large multimillion dollar bond. At some point, that will be a positive economic benefit to the community. One thing I do want to throw out, too, there has been obviously a lot of federal aid. And to put that in perspective, the federal economy, or the US economy, is $22 trillion, so on an annual basis. They have basically put more stimulus in the range of 10% to 11% in, in terms of CARES Act, and just this latest round of 3.5 stimulus package. So we can't underestimate the injection of funds that the federal government has done in terms of putting 10-plus more percent back into the economy. Now, we don't know where that's going to align, but that's going to have some positive economic benefit. So I did want to at least point that out. One thing, too, there's two areas that are also hit beyond really just our general fund budget, and that's the lodging tax fund. So as I mentioned before, the hotel areas, one, that has taken the brunt of COVID-19. We originally had almost a $600,000 budget for 2020. The revenue we've collected so far is about $100,000, and expenditures are about 63. We don't think we're going to receive a lot more money beyond $100,000, maybe $50,000 more, but that would be maybe optimistic. So the obligations that we committed to are unlikely to be able to be funded by the lodging tax fund. This is a list of those events that have already been canceled. As you recall, the Lacey Cultural Festival was really the first casualty of COVID-19. Olympic Air Show has already been announced that they're going to cancel, and also Lacey Polyfest. But that just brings me to really the issue of, there's a number of events that are future-oriented in July, and this is not to say that those events can't be held, because we just don't know, but the reality is, we cannot fund them, because we do rely on the future revenue of the hotel motel tax to fund, reimburse those events. So we need to go back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and we'll be recommending a new budget to actually be more in line with the revenues that we do have. Another casualty of COVID-19, we've met with park staff, it's probably not feasible for us to do the July 3rd event, and so we are making plans to cancel that event, given the fact that it's one of our larger events with, you know, close to 7,000 people, again, given the uncertainty about what social distancing is going to be in the future, and again, just the expense it takes to hold that event. There are sort of long-term partners that we've had in the Lodging Tax Fund, we'll have to weigh in on that one. I could tell you we'll not be able to transfer the $160,000 to the RAC. We anticipate the RAC is going to probably take a 40% revenue loss, just because we're not holding tournaments, we're not doing field rentals, and there's no concessions that we typically rely on to offset some expenditures with that. So the RAC budget itself, we have other reserves that are unassigned, that we can probably, probably in the tune of $250,000 to $300,000, that we'll probably have to shore that up. That will be balanced out by labor costs, as well as maintenance costs for that budget, too. But the idea with this whole budget, and I'll be happy to take questions, is to come back to, in May, with a new budget with these new numbers. It makes sense to be proactive, given what's going on in the economy. I feel fortunate that we do have reserves that we can, I would say, take the biggest brunt of the impact. But I think also, we need to be careful, too, this is assuming a three-month event. So if you saw the timeline, we're assuming this started in, in essentially March 1, and ends in June 1. But if restrictions continue beyond June 1, we may have to revisit the budget and take a look if this is actually deeper than we first thought. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So how soon can you get the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee together? Because I think as this council knows, they are, it's an interesting model, right? They're almost, to a degree, an independent body that makes suggestions, and that's, we can only agree with it or not agree with it, we can't go in there and change the numbers. So the Lodging Tax Committee is going to have to make a decision before it comes to this council. How, how soon can you do that, Scott?
Since we have two weeks, I think we have the ability to have a special LTAC committee meeting, and then be in, be in time to have a recommendation from them for May 14th.
Okay, that's good. Lenny, make sure you unmute.
Scott, just, I mean, obviously, we all know we're going to have huge revenue impact, but isn't it true also, though, that there'll be some offset? I mean, for instance, the RAC is going to lose all of its revenue from rentals and all that, but also, there should be some savings in the fact that the fields aren't being used. So I mean, there's, I mean, obviously nowhere near enough to offset the actual cost, but there should be some offset, right? Fields aren't getting as much wear and tear, or things like that, I mean, there's got to be some other side to that, right?
There is, that's a good point, Councilmember Greenstein. So if, if this is just purely a revenue loss, which I think is going to be probably in the tune of 40 to maybe 45%, then we're looking at about a $500,000 hit. Because we can offset some of that with maintenance and not having sort of part-time labor that would normally be needed to maintain those things, we could probably reduce that to about $250,000, hopefully.
Thank you.
Any other quick questions? So obviously, the next step is LTAC. Councilmember Cox?
I just want to thank Scott and staff, I think that's a, it's a really thoughtful approach to this, and I think the places that you have selected to suggest that we cut are good ones, that make sense. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda. We've, oh, Scott, yes?
So just one thing, just more for council heads up. As you know, there is a lot of demand, I think, on the city council, as well as the city, in terms of other nonprofit asks that we've received in the last couple of weeks. There's also, from the same side of the economic development, I'll say, infrastructure or agencies. We can make a formal recommendation, but there's been some thought about, do we set aside an additional $100,000 for nonprofits, an additional $100,000 for our economic development partners, to ensure that they can actually, you know, be in assistance during this time of COVID-19?
Yes, but do you need a, a motion for that? Or do you just need a?
No, I just want to get some feedback from council, and if we're going to have that discussion for May 14th, it'd be appropriate to set those funds aside at that time.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think we should have the proper motion and ordinance, wherever that's necessary for, for that time, to discuss it. Anything else? Councilmember Cox?
I just, I think the city manager probably would not put that suggestion out there if he wasn't confident that the resources are there to cover that, and I think it, I think it is a great thing to do, if we can manage it.
Yeah. Yeah, we've already had some conversations about what, what reserves and what fund balances to, to, to make up that $200,000, so that can be explained a little bit more at May 14th as well. Do you have anything, Deputy Mayor? It looked like you want to ask a question.
No, not really. I think because I have a number of committees that are trying to move us forward with other, with things that we're already starting to do, I'm not sure how we can follow through, but I don't want them to see him lag either, so I guess I'll just have to see how the budget is coming up, and, and then following through with that.
I guess, I guess that, that is a good question. I mean, I know we've had some asks already. For example, Homeless Backpacks has had an ask that's been, you know, out there for now several weeks. The, the EDC and the, but the Stand Up Thurston, where they're, they have an ask that's been out as well. Is May 14th too far away for us to sort of come to some of these decisions? Or, what are you thinking, Scott?
I don't think so. I guess my concern would be by, I just want to make sure council has that discussion. I think we just need to provide a cap, because at some point, we can't have, we don't have unlimited resources to meet all the demand. And so my suggestion is just to, at some point, if we're going to put $100,000 aside for nonprofits, we need to say this is it, and if it, we, you know, once it goes beyond $100,000, we can't provide anymore.
Understandable.
So the other question is, if we have ongoing types of activities that our staff are working on, will we assume they will continue forward, or are we cutting that back, too?
I would say we are going to be able to accommodate our normal operations, assuming we get back to normal. So in terms of our normal operations, the budget makes them intact. I mean, there's some projects that are not going to happen, but those are more like one-time capital projects.
I, I just have one last quick question before we'll adjourn the meeting. And I was, I meant to ask it earlier, under the emergency declaration provisions, have, have you made any decisions that have bypassed our normal processes because of the emergency? And, and what are the reporting requirements that are out there if you were to make a decision like that?
So it's more just the bidding requirement, so it prevent, not prevents us, it, it eliminates the step of having to go through, so free sort of competitive bid process, or going out for a, a closed bid process. We really haven't had that many large expenditures. It's more of a concern in terms of if FEMA is going to provide additional reimbursement, that's really what the, I think, the intent of having our declaration of emergency. But there's been some minor purchases for, you know, PPE, those type of things, but there hasn't been a, there hasn't been some significant purchase that we've had to make because of COVID-19.
Great. Well, thank you. That means we've reached the end of our agenda. Does the council have anything else that needs to be discussed? Then seeing none, I will call this meeting adjourned, and as always, Lacey, you guys stay safe, and of course, keep it classy. I'll call a meeting adjourned.